Good morning, welcome to the Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. Meeting of the Reno County Commission. Hard to say that 2021, but I'm gonna have to get used to that, I guess. Our first order today, as always, is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With us this morning to lead us in our opening prayer is Gary Gedding with Elliott Mortuary. Gary, please.
Yes, shall we pray? Our kind and gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful for a new year. 2020 was kinda crazy. We hope to put a lot of that craziness behind us, we hope. Of course, we don't know what's coming up in this year, and so we trust you for guidance and wisdom, for discernment and direction, and we pray for mercy, Lord, for each of us. Thank you for those who serve us in this county, in this chamber especially, and the discussions, the decisions that go on that affect the citizens of our county. Guide and direct them, I pray, with wisdom. I pray for those who serve us out in the county as first responders as well. Be your watchful care over them, your hand upon their lives to bless and sustain them. And I just thank you for our county and pray your blessings on it. And guide and direct this day, I pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Gary, for calling in.
You're very welcome, sir.
Appreciate it.
You'll take care. All right. Bye.
There we go. Okay. Announcements from the chair, I'm not sure that I have any this morning, so we'll move on to public comment on items not on the agenda. No one there? Okay. Item five, determined additions or revisions to the agenda. Is there any items that the Commissioner would like to add or have revised?
I have none.
Commissioner Stefan?
I'm good.
Okay. County Administrator?
Yes, sir.
And occasionally Joe gets upset if I don't ask him if he has items, so...
I have none, thank you.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of four items. Our vouchers in the amount of $637,867.61. Our COVID relief fund vouchers totaling $187,574.6. Change orders, 977 and 980 through 983. And an agreement being presented to us with New Beginnings for partial funding of a Metalark Commons project. I need to ask for a motion to consider this consent agenda. I will suggest that item D, there are some people here that want to speak to that subject, and so, once the motion is on the table, we would ask them to come and address the commission. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented by Commissioner Sellers.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe, Shonda, if you'll ask the New Beginnings people and also with them is the gentleman with the group that is going to run the center. And I ask them all to come in maybe at one time. Shara, this is on the table for discussion at this point in time. If you would come and introduce yourself. We have one Commissioner with us that was not in your original presentation when you and past Sheriff Henderson made this presentation, so please give us a short synopsis of what you are doing and what you're asking for.
We have a building at 10122E2 that was the first tax credit project that we did for affordable housing. It, in low-income housing tax credits, there's a period of time and then, excuse me, and then it ages out. And we were able to purchase the bill, purchase our investors' portions, so we solely owned the building. We purchased it for $1,500, so it wasn't a large purchase. And we could've continued to do transitional housing, but we had been a part of and have been a part of about, and I think Sheriff Henderson can speak more to this, but about 40 agencies and organizations throughout the county came together. We've been looking for what would complete the whole service matrix for addictions and substance abuse treatment. We've got a, we have about a 15-year history of working with SACs, so we, which is the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas. We approached them to see if they would be interested in a detox center. They run the one in Wichita. And so, we proceeded with the organization and raising money. We needed about $526,000 for renovations, not totally, totally aimed at the renovating for the detox center. As the building entirely. We have, we made a presentation to the city early on. For, our request was 50,000, our request to the county was the same, primarily for the fire suppression system that goes in there. It's about a $100,000 item. And we were grandfathered in to begin with, but it's required for this type of operation. In the meantime, the committee, the fundraising committee off of the overall committee has raised the rest of the money, which is $426,000, sitting waiting for expenditures. I think I sent you the contract with Borski's Construction, which is the ones that are doing the project. It began December 12th, I mean, 14th, and I have their first pay agreement request in. So, we're about a fourth of the way done with the project, expected to be completed in March. We are not operating the program. That is not who we are. Substance Abuse Center of Kansas are the people that will operate the detox and inpatient treatment center. Shall I say more, or do you have questions?
I ask you to be brief, that's brief. Would you introduce Harold, please?
I sure will.
Substance Abuse Center?
Yes, this is Harold Casey. He's the CEO for the Substance Abuse Center of Kansas.
Good morning.
Harold, thank you for coming over.
Sure. What we would like to see happen in our process of this is to open up a residential drug and alcohol treatment center that also provides what we call detox beds, or in some cases, sobering beds. We've been doing that in Wichita for about five years. You know, one of the aspects that I always look at is the human condition and trying to help people. But my experience with legislators in Topeka and locally is to really look at the cost savings. And so, our detox in Wichita, we've had WSU, Wichita State University, do a cost savings analysis every year. It's a small detox unit of 15 beds right now. Because of COVID, we're keeping one person to a room, so it's seven beds. But WSU has estimated every year that we've been saving $400,000 to $500,000 for the state, for the county, for the sheriff's department, the police department. And that is a very conservative estimate, according to WSU. We're able to do a quick turnaround for police officers that are dropping people off. It's about a 10-minute turnaround, which is much better than with a hospital emergency department, which is where they were taking people in the past. When the officer drops somebody off at the hospital, they have to stay there till that person's either admitted or discharged. And when we looked at the average waiting period, it was about six hours for an officer having to sit there and wait for this determination to take place. You know, these are uninsured. For our detox in Wichita, which we think will be very much the same way here statistically, 94% of the people we're admitting are uninsured. They don't have a medical card, they don't have private insurance. They're being brought in by, you know, the police department for the most part. What we found is initially, people were being referred after being in the emergency room or being in the police car for several hours and trying to figure out what to do with this individual. What we find is we have certainly repeated admissions, but we want those admissions. These are people that were going to the local hospital, being picked up by police, going to shelters and causing problems at the shelters because they're intoxicated and there's families in the shelter. You know, they're throwing up, they're disrobing, they're just difficult in the shelters. And so, what we found is that after they're admitted several times, they figure this out. And so, the fourth, fifth, sixth admission, they're not going to the emergency room. They're not having somebody call an ambulance, because they know they're just gonna get referred back to our detox. So, they just walk in. And they may walk in 20 times a year. We're okay with that, because they're not in a police car, they're not in the emergency department, where people need to be medically taken care of. Generally, they're the people that are not having medical issues. But they will go to the emergency room and say, "I'm suicidal," things of that sort. So, we can admit them. We keep them three to five days and work with them with what we call peer mentors and licensed addictions counselors, and try and get them into treatment somewhere. The waiting list for treatment right now for a male is about seven to eight weeks long. So, if I see you today and you're eligible for treatment, but you're uninsured, you're gonna wait eight to 10 weeks to get into treatment. What we're hoping to do in this process is reduce that, because what happens is these people go back out, they get picked up by the police, they end up in jail again at the hospital, and then we have to start all over again. So, you know, there's a lot of aspects to cost savings, to the human condition, to assisting, you know, local community agencies and providing care for people that just don't need to be in a higher level of care at a, you know, a higher cost.
Okay. Questions, Harold? Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to inquire just a little bit. During your time in Wichita, have you had to go back to the city or county for any additional funding for the operations?
Yeah, I can tell you exactly how the funding works out. It costs about $600,000 to $650,000 a year to take care of that. And most of that is simply staffing. I have contributions from Sedgwick County, and that is primarily that they give me a building and space, and I don't have to pay utilities. So, that's kind of the county's contribution. The city's contribution is $100,000 a year, and that comes from the Wichita City Liquor Tax Coalition. And then the rest of my funding comes from the state of Kansas through federal block grant funding. We're short, in fact, every year we've been short anywhere from $80,000 to $100,000. This year, we almost broke even, and that was the fifth year we've been in existence for that detox. But that's okay, in the sense of our board of directors. We think we should be providing services to this population. If they're not, then they're somewhere else at a higher cost. So, you know, we lobby with, you know, the state and other agencies every year to try and get more funding, so we're not losing so much money. And that has worked fairly well. But again, if we're not providing this service, then it's gonna cost tenfold somewhere else.
The reason I ask that is because early on, if I remember correctly, that this program would be self-supporting, provided we get the facility available to them, that there would be no further request for operation. So, that's why I was just asking.
Sure. That's not, my goal is not to ask. You know, this is Shara, mainly just trying to, or New Beginnings, trying to get the building renovated so we can move in and start providing services. We believe that there is several different funding, which could be a medical card, which will help support what we're doing, although a medical card does not support or pay for detox. It will pay for treatment. So, we think there's some help there. Senate Bill 123, which is the drug diversion bill, we think we can get clients under that and help support what we're doing. And then, private pay or some private insurance. We hope out of those three reimbursement areas, we can then provide 25% to 30% of our beds toward the indigent population. We think that'll work out where we can break even.
I also like the idea, you know, it took me a while to get around all of this, but the fact that, I'm sure the vacancy rate at Metalark Commons is quite high. And so, this gives an opportunity to utilize some of that vacant facilities we have, instead of anybody building new, as Commissioner Sellers brought up here, or Commissioner Stefan, I forget which one, brought up the fact that some of these state builds new buildings when we have adequate buildings here. And so, that was a question. And this also could be used as an overload factor from other counties.
Possibly. Certainly, when we look at statistics for admissions into our Wichita, we're full most every day. When we had 14 beds, we were full most every day. We're down to seven beds, we're still full most every day, or some part of the day.
When you said you lost money the first four years, kinda broke even this year. How'd you bridge the gap financially?
Out of other contracts that I have.
You might express the other places that you have facilities, because Wichita's not your only facility.
No. Actually, we opened up in 1995. We were a new project in the state of Kansas, a pilot program. And what the state was concerned about at that point was that pregnant women and women with children were calling and asking for assistance, and said they would call today, they would get an appointment in the middle of February. So, the state was concerned that it was taking so long to get this priority population in for assistance, because if you wait four or five weeks, they don't show up. So, half your appointments end up no-show anyway. So, under our contract with Kansas Department of Aging and Disability, pregnant women and women with children were required to provide an appointment within 24 to 48 hours, no matter where they're at across the 29-county area. So, that's how much region we have. I have staff that work from Hudson to Wichita, Emporia, Winfield, Pittsburgh, Independence, Iowa, Sunut, and everywhere in between. And so, we started off with five staff in 1995. Today, we have about 80 staff. We believe this project will allow us to hire around 18 additional people here in the Reno County area.
Are you 501(c)(3)?
Correct. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I work at the behest of a board of directors, and, you know, I have a manager for the Hudson office. We have a detox in Wichita, we have a recovery center in Wichita, we have another office in Wichita. Then we have an office here with a recovery center. We initially started, I think, in 1996, working with Shara by having a counselor placed in the shelter to assess and refer people in the shelter that were having addiction problems out to treatment. We can provide the assessments and refer anybody in the state to anywhere that there is an opening. The issue is, for the indigent male population, there is no openings. So, they're gonna have to wait a long time. We're trying to shorten that waiting list. We, you know, we're busy here. We do a lot of assessments in the Reno County area. I have about, right now, I think, 11 or 12 staff that work here in Reno County in Hudson. So, we think a lot of referrals, because of the waiting list, will allow us to fill up the facility for that population. We think there'll be about 30 to 35 beds. Some of that depends on how many women you have, but this program, we're gonna start out with men only. We don't plan on admitting women other than for detox and then getting them into treatment to other women-specific programs. It's primarily assisting those males that are indigent and somewhere else in the system.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, Harold? Randy Henderson, would you come up?
Thank you.
Our past Reno County Sheriff. Randy, I know you've been working with committees for three or four years on ways to solve these types of problems. Would you tell us why you moved in this way and why you think, from a law enforcement perspective, that this is the right thing for Reno County to help with?
Yes, sir, I'll take you through a little history. 1998, I came out of the narcotics unit after spending nine years there. And I saw that just eradicating and enforcing drug laws was not working. We had a lot of people, good people, addicted to drugs that had no way of getting off. So, that's when Shara, Judge McCarville, his wife Diana, and myself and several other people started working on a project like this, back in 1998. There's been several attempts since then. Again, money's always been an issue. In 2002, when I became the sheriff and started trying to work with inmates in the jail, it wasn't possible in the old jail that we had. And thank goodness, the voters of Reno County gave us a new facility in 2014, where we do have room for programs, and they're being very successful to deal with drug abusers in the jail. But those people are clean. We still have a whole lot of people out there on the street that don't have the opportunity to get clean, to change their behavior, and to become productive citizens. And that's why we're pushing this. Again, like Shara said, there's probably about 40 different entities, companies, private individuals, state and city organizations are working together on this project.
Any questions of, I don't know how they're addressing past sheriffs?
It's just good to be back and see you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay. I believe there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is that correct? Any more discussion?
Yeah, Commissioner Sellers, I'd like to make one comment and make it plain, because I'm sure we're gonna get questions from the public regarding putting county funds into a building that is owned by New Beginnings, that's also within a city that we don't have any ownership in. And I would like to say that should this pass and we provide these $50,000, that we have made a concerted effort to put that money only towards this facility, part of, part of this facility that has to do with the detox facility. That it's not used for any other renovation, although it enables some of that money to go towards other renovations. But our funds itself will only be utilized in those areas that have to do with the detox facility.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to make a statement. You know, obviously, this is a wonderful cause, and I support it 100%. And I think I've demonstrated my commitment to nonprofit entities, as I have donated every penny I've received in salary from the county commission. Where I have a problem is this is just not my money to spend and give to a nonprofit organization. It's a very, very unusual request. You know, I was told at the very start that this is not a typical practice. And again, you know, from a conservative standpoint, I cannot support making the decision to give other people's money away to a preferred nonprofit organization. That's what individuals do. Individuals make that choice. So, while you'll have my undying respect, and you might wanna come my way for a donation at some point, I cannot commit to giving other people's money away in this situation.
Okay. Appreciate those comments. I guess I'd make a comment on the other side of this, is that the information that we've been provided says that this is a, to get this facility ready is a $536,000 project. Our part of this is a very small part of it. This group has raised significant private money, significant private money. I believe I have that amount here somewhere in the realm of, what, 200 and... Shara, help me, 200 and...
It's 426,000.
Correct. And that is from SAC, from Oxford Recovery, from private individuals, from the United Way. And so, I really feel like that we're doing what is needed for the community, for the city, for the county. And I'm personally proud to be part of this project, to help it get off the ground and to take care of people within our community.
If I may make one other comment regarding this, is to protect, to do some protection with the funds that we're utilizing of our county taxpayers' money, is that we have put in a stipulation here that should this project not be used for a detox facility, that we will, for the first 10 years, that we will receive a portion of the investment that we put into this, that will come back from New Beginnings to us, to the county. So, that's a little bit of protection that helped me decide to do this project. And I understand where Commissioner Stefan, you're coming from, because I had to work through this quite a bit.
Okay. Any other comments? Please, I guess, is it in order to separate this from the rest of the items? Because I'm assuming there might be a negative vote, and I don't think that vote is on all these items, so...
Well, I thought when I made that motion, that you had already separated out item D from A, B, and C, the first three.
So, the motion to approve the agreement?
That's how you want it? Okay.
Okay. So, your motion that we added in the second is the agreement with New Beginnings?
The first, the first motion would be for A, B, and C, because I thought you had already separated that out. If I misunderstood, I'm sorry, but I thought my motion would include...
Okay, I'm catching up here. There is a motion to approve A, B, and C vouchers, CRF vouchers, and change orders. Please call the roll on that.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Now, is there a motion to approve item D, the agreement with New Beginnings?
I would move to approve the agreement with New Beginnings for partial funding in the amount of $50,000 for the Metalark... the amount of $50,000 for the Metallock Commons Project, that is, to use for a detox facility.
I will second that. Is there any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Stephan?
No.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to business items. Item A, a request from Human Resource Director Renee Harris to extend the Reno County Emergency Paid Sick Leave Policy through March 31st. Renee, would you please explain the policy and what you're asking to expand?
Yes, so this is an extension of the federal program, the end of December 31st. The program originally allowed for certain employers to give up to 80 hours for employees who met specific requirements regarding COVID illness and quarantine. We had quite a few employees that took advantage of that, were able to take advantage of that and had to be ill or quarantined. That's, I ran a report this morning, it was approximately 108. Without looking at every single employee, that's 8,686 hours were used through December 31st. If you just assume that each of those employees, at 80 hours each, that comes to 108 employees. We did have some employees that didn't need to use the full 80 hours. So what this is doing is because that we are still in the midst of some issues with employees being out ill, being quarantined, coming up positive with things, this is just requesting or discussing an extension of the use of the 80 hours if they have not already been exhausted for illness or quarantine, just through March 31st. At that point, the commission can review it again and see if there's any other changes necessary. This, the outline here follows exactly what the original FFCRA requirements were. I did ask, in this case, because it's not under the federal, I did ask that we will be asking the employees to provide documentation of if they've sought medical attention and been tested or been quarantined. We were able to get that in all but a small handful of cases originally, so that shouldn't be an issue. But we are asking that employees do seek medical care, or if they get tested, again, that they can bring us something that says that that happened. So that shouldn't be any additional burden. That's something that we requested from the employees originally as well. So, other than that, it's, and we'll have a special code set up so we can track how often that leave was used compared to the other FFCRA leave.
Refresh my memory on how this is paid for?
It comes out of the county funds. For private employers that qualify, they're able to take tax credits. They were able to take tax credits through December 31st. The counties, municipals, were never eligible for that. It just comes off of, it just comes out of the county budget. As I mentioned in there, each employee is already budgeted, assuming that person is here working 40 hours a week. So in this case, we're not paying additional money because we're already budgeted for that position, but, or, and for those employees that had paid leave in the bank, they would have used paid leave in that case. So there's no additional funding. It's just that if an employee didn't have any paid leave, they'd be without pay. But that's a whole nother different situation, so.
Well, and then there the significant case that if someone had no paid leave in the bank, that they might show up for work in a situation where they shouldn't be here...
And that's true.
And possibly cause harm to others.
Exactly, yeah. So this is hopefully to alleviate some of that happening and to alleviate those situations. We do have some employees that are just that. They want to be here no matter what, and they, or they know work has to be done, or they don't have paid leave in the bank. So this allows the department head to work with the employees to ensure that if they are ill, they have signs, they have symptoms, they've been around somebody, a known positive, that they can quarantine them, and the employee doesn't have to worry so much about being off without pay.
What was the price tag on it through December 31st?
Well, all I can tell you is that we had used from the entire year, which typically that'd be from about April 1 is when it started, 8,686 hours were utilized. I don't have it broken down by employee or by hourly rate.
With some new changes, it went from 14 days down to, what, five or seven days? Is that taken into consideration too now?
You're talking about the quarantine period?
Yes.
It went down to 10 days, I believe, at one point.
Whatever days it is, I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, definitely. We would still follow. We would still follow, absolutely.
Whatever standards they say.
Yeah. And that's what this is stating, is that, you know, I had one department ask whether they could just quarantine on their own. And my thought was behind this, is this gives, still, it's nothing new, but it gives the department head a direction. And it does when I ask for the medical certification. I want to know that, yes, the employee's home as they should be. They're not being expected to return earlier than the quarantine period is over, but they are expected to quarantine. So yes, it's for the safety of the employee and their coworkers as well.
But if they're out of days and are working by themselves outside?
Yeah, yes.
Up to the department head, I presume?
Yes. We do have some departments. Youth Service is one, landfill is another one, law enforcement can be. They've been able to work with their employees pretty well on being absent. But we have had situations where the employee was around a known positive. They have no symptoms. In those cases, we were able to work with the health department. We provided them the PPE, the mask, the everything necessary, keeping them working separate. So they didn't have to miss work. They can't telework. Physicians that can telework, we're gonna ask them to telework. So we don't want to just willingly have all these people off and sitting home, no, you know. If we can get them to work and if we can work around them and they're not symptomatic, we're gonna try very hard to do that. And departments want to do that as well.
I'm sure, I'm sure just for manpower.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. When you're already shorthanded, it's not, yeah.
And these hours are charged to the individual department's budgets?
Yes. Yeah, no different than, yeah, they were using their sick leave or their personal leave.
This is the same situation everybody's facing, be it in the county government or the real world.
Yes. Yeah, and there are quite a few. I actually went to, this has been a discussion that's been happening for the last couple of weeks amongst the HRless serves. And in this kind of a quick survey of the ones that were coming through, some of the very small ones are not extending it, but they've been very fortunate to have rarely any use of it, and they're gonna kind of operate on a case by case. If it comes back up again, they may extend it on their own. Most of the larger departments are extending it at this point. Counties, I should say, instead of departments, through March, and doing the same thing.
Other counties?
Other counties, correct. But again, it's not, their ability to use the leave they haven't already had.
Well, as Commissioner Stephan just said, this isn't unique to government. I think all businesses have been faced with this.
Yes.
And they've done what they feel is in the best interest of their employees. And as far as I'm concerned, we don't want sick or possibly sick people at work. So I don't have a problem with this extension.
I don't either.
Is there a motion to extend this to March 31st?
I would still move to extend the Reno County Emergency Paid Sick Leave through March 31st, 2021, as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Is there further discussion?
Well, yeah, you know, I think I'd like to throw out there the idea that nobody's getting through this financially untouched. And it's tough. And I know it's been tough for me. And these government jobs are pretty nice, and they're secure. And that paycheck comes as regular as it can be. Yeah, I could feel a lot better about a 40-hour max on that. I think everybody needs to have some skin in the game on this kind of thing. And I think, I think we take really good care of our employees. And this is a tough situation, and everybody ultimately is asked to give to some degree. And so I like the idea of splitting that down the middle and going that route myself. I think that's a fair compromise.
Okay, to clarify your suggestion, you're moving the wording from 80 hours to 40 hours?
Yes.
That's for a full-time employee. Do you wanna, are you touching a 30-hour employee and the 20 hours in half also?
I've got to cut them all in half.
Is, Commissioner Stephan, are you suggesting that as an amendment to the motion?
I would, I would make that as an amendment to the motion.
Does the person that made the motion, Commissioner Hirsch, accept that amendment?
Well, I think that's done properly through a second. And so, yeah, for discussion, yeah, second, the amendment. I'm gonna put you on the spot, aren't I?
Okay, we have discussion of an amendment. Is that correct, Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes, correct. Joe, any, call me if I make a mistake, you tell me. Renee, discuss that a little bit.
How many motions are before the board?
There's one motion and an amendment to that motion that we're discussing at this point.
And the amendment amended the first one, so there's really only...
No, no.
Okay.
You vote on the amendment first, then the motion as amended.
Okay, so Renee, tell us why you, as Human Relations Director, suggest the 80 hours versus the 40 hours?
Well, I hadn't even thought about 40 hours, honestly. And I did the 80 because that's, we're just extending the original program. So, you know, right off the top of my head, I don't, I can't entirely argue against 40. I can't entirely argue for 80, other than just it's just an extension of the program.
Tell us a little bit about this, about paid sick leave, to start with. Explain how, does that carry, how much carries over? When does the year start and end?
Well...
Help define that a little bit for me.
So, and mentioning paid sick leave in general is a good point. Paid sick leave does not begin to accrue. So where this affects a lot of the employees the most is those new hires. They don't get any sick leave at all until they've been here six months. So in this case, when this first started in April, it was fortunate, because at that point, we did have some, we had quite a few new hires during that time period. And they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have had, PLT begins to accrue 3.72 hours every two weeks from the date of employment. So less than a day per month when you're first hired, but no sick leave. So if you're here six months, if you haven't had to take any time off at all, you might have a week's worth of pay at six months. Not actually, no, you won't have it, yeah. So, but, and then from then on, I mean, excuse me, 4.32 hours for PLT, yes, you would have probably a week. Sick leave, it would take another, quite a few months to build up anything for sick leave. You can use your PLT for sick. But it does take a while to build up, at least that first year. So I don't, I suspect you could do 40, and then if you felt like we needed to come back and look at it again, before then, we could do that.
Yeah, you certainly could come back, see if it's working fine or it's not working particularly well for people.
Yeah, the new hires, and new, brand-new hires, and the newly, within the year, year and a half, are gonna be the most affected, probably. Couple of years, probably, because they haven't had the opportunity to build up. And it doesn't take, it takes quite a while to build two weeks. But if you're out on quarantine, and if the quarantine is 10 days, it helps. If they do have to be out, in this case, 14 days or 21, if the circumstances are, fall that way, then they would be in a without pay situation, so.
Okay, any other discussion before we vote on this amendment to the motion?
So if they happen to be quarantined for 10 days, that's basically two weeks. We get, not figuring weekends, right?
Well, they calculate weekends, because it's consecutive 10 days, yeah. So it could be a case where, yeah, maybe they've only missed five days of work, because their quarantine falls just right over the weekend, so.
Any more discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the suggested amendment to change the document from 40, 80 hours to 40 hours. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hirsch?
I'm still digesting it.
Would you like more information? Would you like...
How would it, how would it, yeah, I would, I really would. I would affect, say, a full-time employee. I mean, we're looking at...
But it just depends on how long they've been here.
I'm talking about one that's been here for a year, okay?
For a year, if they haven't used any leave at all since they started, 4.32 times 26, that's how many, do math in your head real quick?
105.
Yeah, yeah. So they'd have, if they'd been here a year, if they haven't used any leave at all, no doctor's appointments, no anything, they would have enough to cover two weeks.
Two and a half weeks.
Yeah.
Two and a half weeks.
Yeah. It's pretty rare someone goes a whole year without using any time off.
Oh, yeah.
But, so...
Yes, if you're calling the roll. As a trial period, yes, if you see some situations that come back, I would, I would go yes.
Mr. Stephan?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
I guess I'm gonna vote no. I think the program's been working well. Renee's getting verification from people that they're out on the COVID-related deal. And I'm one that I'd rather have somebody be careful and be home than spread the virus, so I'll vote no. Okay, with that, we would consider a motion to consider the Reno County Emergency Paid Sick Leave Policy through March 31st with the change in the document of from 80 hours to 40 hours. Is there a motion to do that?
Would, would that, that would, I know what you're meaning, but would that include the half, the 30-hour people?
Adjusting all of the others.
Adjusted all the hours accordingly.
Is that what you mean? Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion to that?
The motion's already on the floor as amended.
Okay.
So we just need a vote.
Okay. Any more discussion before we vote? Not, please call the roll.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Stephan?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Okay, thank you, Renee, for being here.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion on county's broadband and phone service. We have Mike Matthews with Information Services Director with us today. Welcome, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kind of start off by telling you why this is coming to, for discussion. Through, you know, all the things that we're doing differently now for COVID with Zoom and remote working and trying to stream meetings and all of that sort of thing, we're finding that our bandwidth for internet is probably not fast enough. And so we were already reviewing phone service. Many times nowadays, that's all tied together. And so I've probably been working on this for, oh, I don't know, maybe six months. And our current phone... And, uh, our current phone system that we have, we put it in ten years ago. So, the hardware that runs that system's kind of at the end of its, its life. My plan for the last couple of years has been that when that happened, we would go to IP telephone system that would be hosted by, by a vendor. And so, I've talked to three, three vendors, I've talked to Cox, Ideatech, and then CTA currently. Man, it helps us with our phone system when we need it. We manage it mostly on our own, but on occasion. Really, CTA was, monthly charge wasn't, wasn't feasible, so I, I didn't give you much information on them. But we do have Cox and, and Ideatech as options. Both of them would provide us a one gigabit internet connection. We have three hundred right now, three hundred megabits. So, um, this would be two and a half times faster and give us a lot more opportunity for use. So, that we think is, is really important in today's, today's world. Uh, both would provide us a IP cloud-based phone system. The real difference is how they deliver the service. Ideatech would ride our, our own network backbone, so if you had a computer there, you would have a, a phone that would be plugged into our network and then it would, the computer would plug into it. Cox would actually come in and run new cable to all of our locations where there would be a phone. They would also bring in separate internet for the phones. So, none of our telephone traffic could run over our data network. So, that, that's kind of a, a big difference in the, in the two offerings. The other thing is, is that, um, Cox handles everything, like if a phone goes out, we just call them and they come out. Ideatech, we, we work with them and our staff would, would be involved in that also. So, that's kind of the big differences in it. Both, both systems offer a, uh, an app for your cell phone so that, say, I, I'm out somewhere and I need to make a call, but I don't, I don't want it to look like it's coming from my personal cell phone number. I can dial it and it'll, it'll act like it's my, my office phone. I can receive calls that same way from the office. Uh, with as many people as we have now working remotely or out in the field, I think that's a really neat feature. But, uh, like I say, both services offer that. It's just a, a little different program that they use. This is, this is a, uh, a really big change in the way we deliver telephone. So, my expectation is that it, it's gonna be, whatever we do will be a little rocky. These telephones are, for us, the worst. We'd rather deal with a computer a hundred times over a phone, but it's, it's necessary. And I, I, I'm bringing this to you because I, I don't want to get in a situation where our hardware that is ten years old now fails and then we have, you know, major communication issues. So, um, right now, the way the bids stand with Ideatech or the quotes, they would have a nineteen thousand, six hundred and five dollar upfront cost. Four thousand, six hundred and five of that is for some hardware for, um, some of the departments have overhead speaker systems. So, and then fifteen thousand of that is for the phone service. So they would come in at five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars per month for sixty months.
So the fifteen thousand is for phones?
It's just an upfront cost to, to provide us the service.
Okay.
Um, it's not really for phones. Both, both are providing us the hardware for free. Cox, they have no upfront cost. They have an eight thousand, sixty-nine dollars and five cents per month for sixty months. Now, I talked to them yesterday and I had forgotten, but they've off, they have offered to give us the first two months for free. So the first two months, we would not pay anything to Cox. Just to give you an idea, a little bit of the, how this might go down, if we, um, if we were currently a Cox customer, so if we were to use their service, we would not have to port our phone numbers from, from their, their servers to, to Ideatech or whoever we chose. And also with internet, you get what's called a public IP range. And what that does for us is all of our outside connections, like our email, our VPNs to the, to the state. Anything that we allow the public to come into on our network, we would not have to change because we, we would just increase our speed. So, if we went to Ideatech, we would have to change all of that. So there would be, on our internet access stuff, probably a slight disruption, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be long.
What's it go cost?
Well, it's just gonna cost man-hours for us. There's no, no, um, there should be no monetary cost. But, uh, I mean, for, from a purely technical side, we like the idea of not having to port phone numbers and change those outside IP addresses, but it is certainly doable. We've done it before and we can do it again. But I wanted to give you that, that information.
What kind of man-hours do you suspect that takes?
Well, the phone porting, that's a big deal. That'll take, we would port those numbers, a department or two at a time, so I'm gonna guess we'll spend twenty to thirty hours porting phone numbers. Not, not terrible, but some. And then the other thing on the IP addresses, I would say probably two days. Probably sixteen hours for our senior tech to do that. And then, then there's, you know, troubleshooting all of that because something won't come back up or something will be crosswise. I really think the biggest time killer on this is gonna be training users on how to use new phone system. Because it, every time you make a change, it's, it's a change. And, and so, we want to, if we do this, we want to be able to utilize all the features as, as much as possible. So that means we have to keep our staffs trained and, and make sure they're ready to go. So.
You got that issue either way.
We do have that issue either way.
Look at this, you got Ideatech, Cox, crutching the numbers. Are we looking at apples and ap, comparing apples to apples if you crunch the numbers solely?
We're not, not in the ser, the service delivery, but at the end product, what, what, what you're gonna see at your desk, it's, it's basically this, will be the same. It's the backend that is, is different. It's the, the Cox system never touches our data network. So it would never cause any slowness on our data network because it's a complete different network. Ideatech rides on our, our network's backbone. So, um, I've talked to them a little bit about how much traffic we could expect that to be, and, and it sounds pretty minimal. So, I don't, would not expect it to be a big issue, but that's the difference. Cox runs their own cable. They, if it breaks, they come in and fix it. Whereas if, on Ideatech, if, if something breaks, we, we call them, they send us the parts and we fix it. Or if it's a cabling issue, we're, we have to run new cable or whatever we have to do to, to make that work, so.
Do you have any feel for how significant that difference is, their cable versus?
Honestly, we've done our own cabling for the most part ourselves for so long, it, it'd be hard for me to say, but.
Is it much of an issue or is it a nothing deal?
Well, we, it, that's a hard one to answer because right now, we don't have phones that connect our computers and phones together. So we don't know what the real outcome of that is. But I know a lot of places are doing it and they're, and it works. So I don't see any reason, running the, the IP phones over their network.
So Cox, Mike, is not voice over internet?
It is. It is voice over IP, yes.
So why do they need, why do they need to run new wiring if it's both?
That's how they separate the traffic. So, this is probably gonna get a little geeky, so.
Well, maybe I don't wanna ask that question. Before you answer, I might rephrase my question.
The reason they?
Both of these systems are voice over internet?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
But one's separating it out and retaining more bandwidth for internet.
It is.
Computer.
That's correct. And the other, the reason. Let me try to explain this a little bit, but what, what happens is you, you, you take switches and where everything connects in and you, you try to connect, do what's called quality of service. So that gives a priority. So, we might say that voice is priority over data. I, I doubt it, but, um, and so, that's how, that's how we don't have to do that sort of thing.
Mike, I had a communication from a Reno County employee saying that the present phone system is having some issues, particularly at her desk. I don't know who it was, but, uh, is that true, that we have significant issues or?
Well, I wouldn't say that. Every morning, I do a check of our ticketing system to see what's open. And since I knew I was gonna be speaking with this this morning, I specifically checked. I didn't find any open tickets on telephone service. That being said, I do know, you know, our system is aging. And we are, since we were in the process of this, we, we do have an issue that if we don't do this, I'm gonna have to spend some money and buy a part, um, for, for our current system. But, um, I have asked, I asked my staff this morning to, to, to double-check with that, on that situation and see what's going on because I didn't have any communication of it. So, I do know that we have several departments that use the same type of phones and they're not reporting an issue, so. It could be an individual thing.
Okay. Well, uh, I guess I have a question to, to our county administrator. You, you put this on the agenda as a discussion on county band, brand and, and phone service. Are you, uh, you and/or Mike requesting a decision from the commission today?
I think, um, it's somewhat urgent for the, as Mike mentioned, because of the bandwidth, the internet side, not the phone side. But since it goes together, to get a contract ready for approval, we would need to know which direction the county commission wants to go. Changing, we're gonna need to probably go to voice over, but changing to Ideatech or staying with Cox Communications and seeing the dollar amounts so that a contract can be provided and more work. So it's kind of, yes, a decision or direction from the county commission is requested.
But when I put some numbers together, there's, to me, there's quite a difference. If I look at a yearly cost, uh, and a total sixty-month contract cost, the difference in a sixty-month contract, uh, is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. If I look at a yearly difference in that contract cost for five years, that amounts to twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars. Now with this new information with Cox of giving two months free, that knocks it down to about twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars in favor of Ideatech per year. And, uh, if we're hearing they're both offering the same things. And then if I understood you right, Mike, you said it was gonna, with Ideatech, they're gonna take a little, uh, training period or adjustment period there, or is that with both of them?
It would be with both.
Okay, then I won't take that. I got another calculation here. But to me, it's hard to, uh, hard to look at a twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars per year difference between the two. It's just, it's just tough for me to overcome that dollar-wise. If we're getting both the same and, and what you mentioned is, is basically, uh, uh, one gigabyte, which is three and a third times what we're getting, or three and a hundred and thirty-three percent times faster. Also capabilities to handle more at the same time, and that about right?
That would be correct, yes.
And, and so even though we're putting the phone and it together, uh, that looks to me like it still ought to be. If you tell me if it isn't enough, uh, but, but for the dollars, I have trouble going anywhere else.
Well, um, I, I've always been as conservative as I can be with, with money. But I also am stuck in the position that I know, uh, from the technical side, on what it's gonna take to make that change. Um, honestly, I would be, I would be happy with either one. It is an easier conversion if we went with Cox, but it is not impossible to make the conversion. Because nothing, we don't port our phone numbers, we don't have to change all of our external addresses. We don't break our connections to the state. But that's just purely a technical thing that can be overcome. So, if the board feels more comfortable with the expense from Ideatech, I, I'm happy to make that work.
Is that, those technical difficulties, my five-year, five-year difference is a hundred and seventeen thousand, real close when I came up with?
Well, we'll check our computers out when we do that.
Yeah, it's, it's close. Is there technical?
I think you're, you're closer in this case, Mark.
Are the technical difficulties worth a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars?
I, I can't in good conscience tell you they are. Um, no, I, I just wouldn't do that, so.
You know, uh, I would relate to what the other two commissioners have said on total cost, but I guess in this day and age of wires everywhere, I just can't imagine that we gotta run another wire to every phone that we've got in the system. That, that just, you know, there's wires everywhere this day, and if you could get rid of another wire, I think that's a good decision.
And to be fully transparent on that, you know, one of the projects that we'll be asking for in the budget in the future is a, is to pull all of the Ethernet cable that we have out and replace it with, with what's called CAT six. So when we do that, we, we, we would solve any cabling issues that we might have. So, um, you know, we, we have a, a long-range plan to upgrade our cabling, so.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to proceed with one of these vendors from the commissioner?
Let's Cox, what's come down, a hundred and seventeen thousand?
Yeah, I talked to them yesterday and they're, they're, they're not there.
They're not quite there?
You always give them the offer, appreciate that. You always give them the offer, appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
They came down two months yesterday. I would make the motion that we approve the Ideatech proposal for telephone services as outlined in the document.
I think perhaps what you want is, is a, 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 a motion to ask the county administrator and county council to bring forth a contract for formal consideration.
Okay, I knew.
And to approve the.
I knew I was gonna do that wrong. I.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Uh, you know, your guy would, would wanna say to Randy is how's this gonna affect the budget? But man, you know, if you're paying six thousand right now, we've got, we've got the nineteen thousand, six hundred and five dollar upfront fee to overcome.
Yeah, so we'll, we will be saving money 'cause in the, they, they paid Cox Communication bill six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. So five thousand, five hundred and thirty separate from the upfront cost.
Well, some of that would have probably been TV, so.
Okay.
But not more than a couple hundred.
Still six thousand, so it's.
Yeah, we, we won't.
Four hundred to five hundred dollar a month.
Yeah, still less than.
A hundred and fifty bucks a month, basically. When you, when you average in over the nineteen thousand. So you're actually coming down other than having come up with the nineteen thousand. I presume that's not insurmountable.
Right.
Okay, I withdraw my motion and, uh, make a motion that, uh, we ask the county administrator and the legal department to present the commission with a contract from Ideatech per the proposal that is being made to us today.
Second?
Is there more discussion?
Just thank Mike for all his work on getting this and trying to get him down a little bit.
Yeah, I really appreciate that.
More discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Stefan?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Okay. Now we go to Mark von Achen, county planner. This is a request to vacate a thirty-foot future, uh, street easement
in Rolling Hills subdivision. Rolling Hills subdivision is at the southwest corner of Fifty-S sixth Avenue and, and Hollstead Street. This, uh, road was never constructed and the easement that is on these two owners' property, uh, they have determined that they do not want that ever, ever constructed for a public street. And so they have submitted an application to, uh, vacate that street easement. Under chapter fifty-eight hyphen twenty-six thirteen through twenty-six fifteen, uh, the statutes, commission must find that a proper notice was provided to the public. Public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by such vacation and no private rights will be injured or endangered. Some of the concerns with this, uh, planned street that I had, that I presented to the planning commission was that the street is only thirty foot wide. Normally you're gonna have a street that is sixty foot to seventy foot wide. Uh, there's no turnaround provided for fire engines, ambulances, or even the public should this street ever be constructed. And also this street really does not even connect to Fifty-S sixth Avenue. So those are some of the concerns that I, that I addressed here. We sent notices to all the utilities that could possibly have services in that area. Received no response from any of the utility companies. Therefore, staff recommended approval of this request to the planning commission. On December seventeenth, we held a public hearing on this via Zoom. No public comments were received, uh, from the public either in writing or by phone or during the Zoom call. And the planning commission recommended approval of this request to the county commissioners by a six to nothing vote. So with that, I would stand for any questions the commission may have. I hope that was brief.
That was one of your better days.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Easier project.
Easier project.
Do you go for twenty-twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That is, that is one of my goals.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? Is there a motion to approve this request?
Move to approve the request as presented, the planning case twenty-twenty dash one four.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Stefan?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Moving on, we'll go to the county administrators' report. Randy, items that you have for us today?
Okay, um, the fire district's monthly meeting, the fire chiefs meets this Wednesday, seven PM at the Hutchinson Fire Command and Training Center. Just giving you an update, that, that is.
What time?
Seven PM.
Have you gone to those in the past, Commissioner Hurst?
I have been to two of those in the past. I, I think it's very informative. You get a chance to meet and greet and, and visit. So if you haven't been, that's a good opportunity.
What time is that?
Seven PM. The other thing, just kinda give you an update that the landfill bid opening is next week and pre-construction meeting for the courthouse projects. Both those have meetings next week on January, Thursday, January fourteenth in the morning. So following those meetings, we'll be bringing, or at least for the bid opening, the landfill will have more information at the following meeting about those bids. So that's going on next week here in the courthouse. Those are the only items I have.
Okay. County commission reports or comments? Have any of those today?
Just one question, Randy, are we finished with the Bauer contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Finished with the what?
The Bauer marketing contract for COVID.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, I'm with you now. That, that ended, the end of November, did it not?
End of November. We had a little bit of help in December, but we didn't pay the. Yes, now Lori Moody's taking care of the communications.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst, do you have other comments?
Wish everybody a Happy New Year and Positively Forward.
Positively Forward.
Positively Forward. I like that.
Positively Forward.
I heard that.
It's just off the top, you know, you never can tell what's gonna happen.
T-shirt and country music.
Commissioner Stefan?
Yes. Uh, I'm gonna climb out of the, uh, county swimming pool today, walk out on the diving board and dive back into the state senate. And, uh, and with that, I want y'all to keep in mind one of my favorite sayings is, and that's the government is a watchdog to be fed, not a cow to be milked. And with that in mind, I'm going to go serve in that capacity in the state senate. My committees are Health and Environment, Taxation and Assessment. And I'm the vice chairman of the Commerce Committee. And I think they dovetail together very nicely right now. And, uh, I'm looking.
What's the third committee?
Commerce.
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 Yeah. And, uh, like I say, I think they dovetail together well. I've had the opportunity to, to co-sponsor three bills to date. And the one that'll get you two going in particular is the Transparency and Truth in Taxation Bill. And the good news is that your complaints as to the previous one are removed if this passes, so that the, the multi-year average part of it's gone. Uh, on your side of it, the deadlines have been worked on extensively and been improved and, and should be very functional. Uh, another one that I, that I'm co-sponsoring is the Right to Make a Living Bill, which is incredibly unique bill that ultimately puts government of the, in the position of where they have to defend their bureaucracy and, and, and particularly in the licensure avenue. And it should simplify a, a lot of bureaucratic processes, which we know in health commerce. Uh, lastly, I, I've, I've co, co-sponsored a bill that makes altering a postmark on a mail-in ballot a felony. And I think that's an incredibly timely bill right now. So again, government is, is a watchdog to be fed, not a cow to be milked, and I will function in that capacity and I appreciate it. Thank you all as well.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Mark, I'd like to thank you for, uh, this early working on that, uh, county tax-led situation. Uh, I, I hope that you'll find that other counties are having the same issue that we feel and appreciate you, uh, moving on that quickly.
I'm interested in how work you do with the Commerce Department because they have needed some rejuvenation. So, uh, I, uh, looking forward to visiting there.
Very good.
Okay, I have nothing further. I will stand adjourned.